We're going to be taking these items in reverse order. Seeing as how the President is here and he's here on item two, and I think he has more important things to do than to observe us considering item number one.
Is that important?
Yes, please. Item number two.
Item number two, City Attorney Report Ordinance and Communication from Chair, Jobs and Business Development Committee, relative to tax classifications for businesses utilizing the Internet as the primary means to provide services and amending Los Angeles Municipal Code, Section 21.41, to address the classification of Internet businesses. Counsel referred this matter to the Jobs and Business Development Committee and Budget and Finance Committee on January 6, 2010.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Parks. I know you both are disappointed we're still not in budget deliberations downstairs. And if you want, we can reconvene for later in the afternoon. But on this rare day when we got out of counsel early, I appreciate your work, both of you, in a pro-Jobs agenda. And I came before you a couple of months ago, or about a month ago, when this was coming forward. And I want to thank you in advance for moving this issue forward. You've been as articulate as anybody on this council, Mr. Alacon, about our unemployment rate currently 13.2 percent in the city, 12.4 percent in the county, and the nation just under 10 percent. And if we include underemployed and those who are no longer on the rolls, we know those numbers almost double. It's part of the reason that the council may reconvene the BTAC, the Business Tax Advisory Commission, and we have members like Sal Gomez who are here diligently working on ideas to stimulate job growth. And one of the reasons that I asked them to immediately consider ways to implement a tax credit for job creation in the city. But before all of that, became aware of an urgent problem, and I think as you listen to the entrepreneurs who are here before us, you know, listen to them carefully. We've got some amazing, creative people. Los Angeles continues to attract them. But we know L.A. is an island in a region, and the city of L.A. is in a place that they have to be. A number of companies were looking to relocate from Los Angeles because the gross receipts business tax. And the problems seem clear. These business models are based on low profit margins in sales through the Internet, but many of them are being classified as professional services, the highest tax category in Los Angeles. So on April 15th of last year, on Tax Day, I introduced a motion instructing the Office of Finance to report on a business tax classification that recognizes the use of computer and the Internet. Mr. Rosendahl, who had experiences in his district as well with some of these companies, joined me. And, you know, new technologies present real challenges to us. I wouldn't say otherwise, the way that we interpret our business tax. And it often leads the Office of Finance to place these businesses in a catch-all tax category for lack of clear direction. So that's why it's on us today. The current categories simply do not take into account the new business models and the way they operate. So before you today is a new tax category that would develop a new media category. The ordinance also includes a sunset clause, so that for some reason, it does not have the effect we're hoping to create and retain jobs will be able to eliminate it. But I'm optimistic that it can work, that when we looked at our analysis in the past and it said we could lose up to $10 million, well, that assumes these companies would stay. And I would argue, we're starting actually from zero, the way that our climate is with most of these companies, looking in the near term to leave. And whatever we can get back is money that helps us with our bottom line, and certainly helps us in the spillover effects in our economy. We have jobs like those produced by LegalZoom.com in Hollywood where employees not only are working right there, but they go to the restaurants, and they go to the movie theaters, and they go to everything that they could be doing in Glendale or Burbank, but instead are doing in the city of Los Angeles. We do know that from many companies who are here today, and from the work of Beacon Economics, who I want to thank, and the Office of Finance, who I want to thank as well, these companies pay good salaries to people who live and work in Los Angeles, and those jobs have a multiplier effect. So I know we're going in reverse order. I want to thank you too for your motion on number one, because I think having an appeal system that is a little bit broadened out and is kind of, you know, not a check and balance in the negative sense on the Office of Finance, but, you know, so judge and jury aren't one and the same, I think is going to be a really important thing to go hand-in-hand with this. And the Office of Finance has a superb job of enforcing the directions that we've given to them. Now it's time to give them some new direction and to open up that process. And just in conclusion, they reported back on the revenue impact that a new classification could have. I would argue that job creation, business attraction and retention, increased commercial building occupancy rates and local business spending have to be our primary concern at this time. That's what this committee is about. I know that's what this council is focused on. Besides the budget, it's on jobs. So I urge your passage today, and thank you for your time. But listen to the entrepreneurs. Don't hear it from me.
Before we do that, I do want to hear from the City Attorney as to the draft ordinance.
Deputy City Attorney Dan Whitley. What would you like to hear about?
Tell us about the draft ordinance.
Certainly. Oh, thank you. The draft ordinance is going to add 2141(c) and d that are both going to apply to Internet businesses. 2141(c) in the draft ordinance would apply to Internet-based application service providers. An electronic application is defined as a computer program that provides the user with the ability to accomplish a specific task. Essentially, that's the things you see on your iPhone or on your computer, that it's a program that lets you do virtually anything. The distinction is between programs that you do something and operating system programs. That's the distinction between applications and other programs. The ASP would have to be a business that provides its benefits solely through the Internet, solely through the ASP. It would not be able to have any relationship to its customers other than through this application, except for customer service and other things like that. What we're trying to avoid with that provision are companies that are using, essentially just providing services and have some sort of Internet aspect to their business, like accompanying website to a law firm or something like that, and being able to then argue that some of their revenues are generated from the Internet. So we're trying to limit this only to Internet businesses, businesses that are deriving their revenue from Internet as we're directed by counsel. The other aspect of the definition is that it is not going to apply to sales or downloads. The reason for that is that a sale of something through the Internet is actually the sale of a licensing program, and that's going to cause complications throughout our taxing system if we do that. It's also not going to apply to sales because we already have a retail provision. That's something we can address at a later time, but that wasn't within our direction from counsel. And so there is an exception for that in the definition of Internet-based application In 2141(c)(3), we have a sunset clause. This would apply for five years and then would require counsel approval to continue after that point. That would give the city the opportunity to either retain this as drafted, if it's working as intended, to revoke it and make alterations and repass it, or if it's not working as intended, to do something different. Without a sunset clause, we're going to run into difficulties making changes because of Proposition 218. The way 2141(c) is intended to work and will work is it's going to give businesses that currently pay a higher tax rate, probably as professions and occupations, a lower tax rate. To remove that lower tax rate will require voter approval, which will make it difficult for us to make any changes to this. And since this is a new provision and it's--
Okay, so let me--
Okay.
Anytime a term-limited elected official wants a sunset of more than four years, I'm wondering if that's just deferring the problem. But are you saying that you believe the ordinance essentially will be successful, good, and if we didn't have this 218 consideration, that you would recommend approval?
I don't want to say I would recommend approval. I will say that I worked very hard with many members to try and draft this as closely and directly as we can.
And the reason I say that is why not sunset it in two years or three years to come back and hone in on a better model?
Our audit cycle is three years, so some of these businesses might not have been audited yet before five years. Is that five years gives us enough time to look through our whole audit cycle, determine what problems are going to arise? And again, I think as well, when we discuss the other provisions, the other thing on calendar today, our process is we have an audit, then a board of review hearing, then litigation, and some of these problems might not occur until after we have a court decision saying how this will be applied. So unless we have five years, I'm not sure we'll know exactly what the problems are going to be.
Okay, very good answer. All right.
Can I move on?
Did the Office of Finance want to make a statement?
There is another provision.
Oh, please.
There's 2141(c) applies to Internet-based data manipulation. This is essentially the same thing, except applying solely to a specific type of application, which are search engines. As it stands now, I believe that all search engines would also be applications and would fall under 2141(c). The reason we included 2141(c) is mostly out of an abundance of caution, because we're not sure how these are going to be interpreted. There may be a concern, and a lot of the businesses that were identified initially as being businesses that were to be included in the Internet classification--
Okay, so Section d excludes?
It includes.
It includes?
Internet search engine companies. So it specifically applies only to companies that provide a search engine on the Internet. So that's a narrower classification than 2141(c).
Okay.
So I believe that all businesses that would qualify under 2141(c) would already qualify under 2141(c). My concern and the reason that it's in here is that, again, we're not sure how these are going to apply. It could be that there are some businesses that we're not currently thinking of that might not fall under 2141(c) but would fall under 2141(c).
Yeah.
And we also aren't sure. It could be that 2141(c) might be held unconstitutional for some reason, and we would sell out 2141(c) that would apply to search engines and is more narrowly drawn and maybe more defensible.
All right. Okay, very good. Did the Office of Finance want to make a statement?
Good afternoon. Antoinette Cristobal, Office of Finance. I just want to say that my office has worked very closely with staff from the mayor's office, council offices, as well as the CLA and City Attorney on putting together this draft ordinance, and we are definitely in support of moving this forward.
Okay. Okay, we have a number of cards.
Let me just ask, incident, because we've had a couple of these. You did an assessment of what could be the possible loss of revenue?
We're actually working with the CAO's office on preparing a joint report. We don't have a final number at this point. We're hoping to have something released within this week.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, before the public comes forward, let me just say my inclination coming into this hearing is to actually defer this committee's decision until Budget and Finance has an opportunity to hear it, because it's double-referred. But since the Chair of Budget and Finance sits here, what is your inclination on this?
One thing I think that's important, well, there's two questions. I have one for the City Attorney, but the other issue is what is the dollar issue? If we're talking as someone projected eight to 17 million change in our revenue, that's a big issue. But the one thing I want to make clear, because of the terminology, how do these companies, the ASP, differ from the recent settlement that we had with a company like Ubit?
Well, again, I don't want to talk about specific taxpayers.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, you get the idea.
Yeah, I can see where you're going with your question. An ASP is a company that has an application on the Internet that people access directly and provide some sort of service to them, some good that they can use. So a company that, for instance, provides gambling services on the Internet would probably fall within this definition, but the difficulty there is going to be tracing what they're actually getting their revenues for. If what they're doing is providing an application that people are accessing, but it's going to fall under some other category, then we would look to see what's going to happen.
Now, are all these companies filing for their licenses legitimately, or are there any out there that might not be counted?
Can I ask, do you mean if they're not filing tax renewal certificates currently?
Well, are they operating outside of our existing provisions?
That I would have to ask Office of Finance. As far as I know, I think--
I mean, one of the theories here is that by changing this law, that more people will invest, and more people will actually come forward and operate legitimately. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. I don't know how many businesses might not be reporting currently and might be tempted to because of this ordinance. That's something beyond my expertise.
Yeah.
Just if I may, Mr. Chair, to answer Mr. Parks's question, although it's not presented here and they said they're working on it with the CAO, what we've been informed is estimates are about three to four million now, previous to that. And that's what some Beacon Economics folks are really drilling in on. And I would encourage you, it's not three to four million that we're guaranteed to have. That's three to four million if everybody decided to stay with no changes. As I think you'll hear, some people are ready to pull the gun on leaving L.A. right away. So that immediately becomes, keeping them is actually something we'd gain over what we'd have next year from them. I mean, in talking to a lot of these entrepreneurs, they have to make an important business decision for themselves, and if they're not here, it's not that we just lose three to four million dollars, we lose them permanently and ongoing.
And also, there are other companies that might choose to locate here that aren't doing that because of the current situation, and because of the saturation of high-tech use in Los Angeles, this is the place to be. It's sort of like Hollywood and filmmaking. I mean, we could lose it through runaway production, but if we act correctly in the long run, we'll generate more revenue than what we're gaining now.
We could also agree to, when it comes to full counsel, I mean, obviously, it has to have those final numbers there, too.
Mr. Garcetti, the only thing I would say is, though, particularly given the situation that we're in economically, do you think it would be prudent to get it to Budget and Finance and get as tangible a figure as possible on the record, so before we make a final decision?
I would encourage to make sure by the time we vote on full counsel to have that number, but we're pretty confident that that's what we're hearing, is about three to four.
Okay, I'm comfortable, I say this before public comment, so know that if you talk too long, I might change my decision, but--
I always reserve that.
But I'm confident in sending this forward with an approval and believe that there will be a final figure by the time it gets to Budget and Finance. And then if there's some dramatic change--
Sure, absolutely.
I just need to explain one thing to me, this hypothetical company that you talked about.
Right.
That's what's unclear, that we've gone through, that if they use technology as part of their business versus technology is their business. And if you are basically investing a bunch of money to attract people to come there for a service, and that service then is what is being deemed as a professional level of tax return, versus that you just have technology and people enjoy the technology, it's different in my mind. And that's what I'm concerned about, is that if you're going online and say you download some forms and you fill them out, to me, that's different than if you go online and then you negotiate some agreement or you end up in some form of an issue such as, you know, hypothetical gambling company, that you go on and you use their technology to bet.
Right.
And so the thing is, is yeah, they may use all or a great portion of their money in technology to attract you, but the real business is you using it to then lay bets, and that's the business at hand, even though a good portion of your income comes from, or the good portion of your expenditures come from basically buying technology to keep attracting customers.
Well, we did put--
That's why I'm wondering, is what's the difference of that hypothetical company and what we're talking about here?
Well, there's a couple differences. We did say in 2141(c)(2) that an ASP business shall not include a business that utilizes an application to sell goods or further its business. So if all they are doing is putting an application online to further its otherwise classified business, then that would be excluded. I don't want to say there won't be questions of proof we're going to come against, because that's always, I think that's one of the tricky things we have now under our code, though, and I don't think that's going to change. And again, we also have a provision saying that this won't apply to any business unless it doesn't have substantial intermediation between any person and their customers. I think it's going to be difficult for businesses to have an ASP on the Internet and then have a side business that's actually what their business is without having people in the middle. And that's why we put that clause in there.
So you're saying if there's human intervention, it's different than just going on availing yourself of the product and then using it and then going on about your business? If there's human intervention, it creates a completely different dynamic.
That's our intent, at least, and our hope is that this will differentiate the businesses that are within the intent of the ordinance, which is to be businesses that are using the Internet as their business model, and businesses that are doing something else and see a low tax rate and are trying to jury-rig their way in there.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about.
And so that's our goal, and we tried to draft this carefully to achieve that goal. We hope that it will work, and we think that it will.
Mr. Garcetti, CEO, let me just ask you a question. One of the things we've asked BTAC to look at, business tax overall, what is your perception in the sense of this being pulled out separately as opposed to being a part of the larger study of business tax?
Well, you know, there's a lot of things we've done with BTAC. One of the things we've done is actually simplify the categories, which has been good for the most part, but had unintended consequence, I think, of oversimplifying them so that we can't make targeted tax incentives like this potentially. We don't want to wait very long for the first round of BTAC suggestions, but this, which I think we've had for about four or five months, it was introduced last April, we've got people on the verge of making decisions. We've extended that a couple of times because I think we all wanted to have real numbers behind it, so we couldn't in good conscience move till we had that, but that clock has been ticking. I think you'll hear that from some of the folks. So the intention of moving this one now is to retain some very specific businesses that are here. And short of that, we might be able to get something good in five or six months, but a couple of the ones that LA Times have highlighted and stuff, I think, are on the verge of making that decision.
Is your impression, that is one of, I think, the original cuts, are we talking about as many as 8,000 businesses that could be moved around in the business tax system?
You mean as a part of this particular thing, or with new categories?
No, with these new categories and the Internet business, because that was one--
Yeah, we do think there's a big concentration of them here, which is a positive thing. I mean, I was talking with one of the individuals you'll hear from, and he was saying probably paid two or 300,000 a year. That's one of the companies. So all you have to do with 8,000 is lose a small portion of those, and you're already at three or four million dollars lost, regardless of if we didn't change the tax structure. So, you know, I think, I don't know the exact number here, but I know that a lot of them are coming here, and it's partially because new media is connected to the content that is kind of Hollywood-driven. So a lot of the, you know, the studios of today is this, the reason they came out here last time was for the good weather. This time, you know, they'd like to be here for all sorts of other reasons, but they will quickly move to an Austin, or quickly move to, you know, someplace else where the taxes are a lot less, because they can be almost anywhere.
Just, John McCombs, CLA, just a quick reminder that the council had actually, in considering the whole scope of tax items for BTAC to consider, pulled this one out and said to City Attorney, Office of Finance, please move this as quickly as possible. So that's why this is here for you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to public comment. Ali Vadaat. I hope I did justice to your name.
I was perfectly fine. Good afternoon. My name is Ali Vadaat. I'm a principal--
Oh, Vadaat, excuse me. Oh, that's an H.
Sorry, my penmanship has gone down since earlier.
Second grade.
Second grade. Computers these days, not much need. My name is Ali Vadaat. I'm a principal with Ernst &amp; Young, LLP, and I practice in the state and local tax group. I'll defer to the other members of the public, who'll probably speak to specifics. I just wanted to come out and touch on a few topics as a representative of other taxpayers who may or may not be here before the Board today, and my interactions with them, and the Los Angeles business tax, and here in particular, with respect to multimedia businesses and the change in law. As mentioned earlier, companies do make their decisions of where to locate based on the tax liabilities they pay. A significant issue that has come up recently in the past few years since I have been in Los Angeles is that taxpayers are constantly challenged with the Los Angeles Gross Receipts Tax and trying to make a location decision. L.A. is one of a number of cities that are located in Southern California, and with opportunities to go up to other jurisdictions such as El Segundo, Burbank, and others that have a much lower tax rate, those companies in many instances do decide to go there. I have actually worked with a number of companies who used to be L.A. business taxpayers, who are no longer within the city jurisdiction because of the Gross Receipts Tax and the classifications. So I wanted to make that one item noted. The other item I want to note here as an inducement that hasn't necessarily been touched upon is, in many instances, a lot of these Internet-based companies are starting out as new companies, and a gross receipts tax is not based on income. Therefore, being in the highest classification puts an additional burden on startup companies and their tax liabilities. So here, by putting them in a lower classification, you do actually encourage startup companies with no revenues or no prior histories to locate in a Los Angeles as opposed to another jurisdiction, by encouraging them to have a lower tax rate as opposed to a higher tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. -- Beverly Kenworthy?
I voted, but the good thing is this moves, but you find us will have the numbers on the--
Okay, okay, good. Okay.
Good afternoon. Beverly. Beverly Kenworthy with the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce. The L.A. Chamber of Commerce strongly supports what we're trying to do here today, and we urge you to move this forward as quickly as possible. I think the chamber is mostly concerned about jobs and jobs and jobs and jobs, and we know that we have already lost thousands of jobs because of this tax issue. And we've been informed, quite frankly, by companies who are waving the red flags, and we're ready to leave unless we change something. So we should thank them for sounding the alarm. And I think you've heard what the risk is, and I mean, if they leave, we have nothing. And we want to be a city that is friendly to business, that's friendly to startups. And there are neighboring cities that seem to know something that we haven't learned yet, and we need to give them a run for their money and start attracting these businesses and retaining these businesses. So we urge you to move quickly. And also, I wanted to let you know that Brad Kemp from Beacon Economics, who is part of this, some other report and the study that was done on this, is also here today, if you'd like to speak with him, too. And I'll have him submit his card if you have any questions for him.
Not I.
No? Okay.
This is his report that's coming? Is that what we're referencing?
Beacon Economics has already done a study.
Okay. But is that the report that's coming to the, that we're looking for those numbers? Is that the report we've referenced?
No, they have, no, we're talking about an Office of Finance report.
It's in your file.
Okay.
That's this one. Yeah.
The report we're waiting for is what?
Is Office of Finance. Office of Finance. Okay, David Toomey. And then we have Blythe Holden and Nicole Shaheenian.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's David Toomey, and I'm with a firm by the name of Cressa Partners. We are the largest real estate service firm in North America that focuses exclusively on tenant representation. Our largest practice in Los Angeles is representing Internet and digital media companies. So clients include companies such as PriceGrabber.com, Business.com, Fandango, Shopzilla, Activision, Rent.com, et cetera. Each year, we work with companies that seek between a million and a half and 2 million square feet of office space in Los Angeles, and that represents approximately 7,500 to 10,000 employees over that number of companies. Our job is to help companies evaluate their real estate options and select the alternatives that meet their needs best. One of the key drivers is obviously cost. So with the city's narrow interpretation of the multimedia category, that has put a number of our clients in a situation where it's become cost prohibitive to stay in the city of Los Angeles. One of the issues that I'm sure you're aware of is, just in the West Side alone, you have municipalities touching one another from Santa Monica, city of L.A., Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, Culver City, El Segundo, unincorporated county of L.A., et cetera. So when a client is in the city of L.A. and they feel like they're being pushed out, financially, it's very easy for them to make a move not very far away and get into another municipality. A couple of examples recently of companies moving out of the city of L.A. that we've been involved with, am I out of time? Okay. PriceGrabber.com, we moved them out of the city of L.A. They have 200 employees. Vantage Media, out of the city of L.A. to El Segundo, 125 employees. We're currently working with 10 digital media companies that employ 2,500 employees right now, so we urge you to consider this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you for your time today. I'm Blythe Holden from Shopzilla, an Internet company located in West Los Angeles. And we're a company that provides, that develops websites. Our most popular are Bizrate.com and Shopzilla.com. And, Mr. Parks, to give you an idea, our company is one where we couldn't open a store if we wanted to. It's exclusively online. It's a comparison-- It's a comparison shopping service where now over 30 million people a month visit our various websites to find out information on what they can buy online or offline, and get prices, reviews, ratings, information like that. There would be no store that we could open that would enable them to get this information from us or for us to provide it. We have, I think that partly addresses, you know, the idea of an ASP. It's one, it's a situation where you don't, you couldn't have a brick and mortar store to do your job or to provide your services. We have just under 250 employees, and about half of them are software engineers because these websites are very complicated and require constant design and updating, R&amp;D to make them more interesting and kind of evolve with the time. These guys make a lot of money, and they're very well-educated, even though they get to wear flip-flops to work. And it's one of the perks.
It's one of the requirements.
Maybe one of the requirements, yes. Anyway, we enjoy a great location in West Los Angeles, and we really would like to stay in that location. Currently, in the past, we've been relying on the multimedia section to pay our taxes. We pay in the range of 200, $250,000 a year under the lower multimedia tax rate. And the change to put us in professions and occupations increases that tax burden to over $1 million a year, which obviously, as Mr. Toomey said, it kind of puts us in a position where we need to start, we can add that to the, excuse me for going over just a second, add that to the factors in considering where we need to locate. And I would just urge you to consider also that there is language right now in the multimedia section. It's just that we're fighting over what it means. It says that a multimedia section, it's the multimedia company includes one that provides online and internet services, including the design of websites. And that's just not enough words to describe or for people to appropriately analyze if you should fit in that section or not. We say it does, and that's why we've been claiming it for 10 years, and it's the only tax classification that even mentions the internet, even has the word included. And I think that partly is because this industry 15 years ago didn't even exist, and we've grown tremendously since then. We started out, you know, in some guy's garage, and now we're, you know, 250 employees and, you know, able to even have this problem to talk to you about. And so I consider ourselves very lucky, but I think the internet is still the future and is still going to be a growing industry. It's here to stay, and we really should address it and try to keep those kind of companies here in the city.
Let me just ask you a question.
Please.
Is that when you said that the services you provide, you can't be in a store?
Correct.
But the service you provide, cost comparison, does the person still have the ability to make the purchase through that process?
No, we don't provide any, we're not.
Information?
Correct, only information. You know, stores nowadays, people don't make a decision on buying a flat-screen TV or even a car the first time that, you know, they see an ad. They, you know, you need to get brand familiarity. You read about it a bit. You get, you know, you get lots of information. And so we don't actually sell anything. We're not a retailer in any way. We're providing information right now about 50,000 different stores online and about all their products, and as those products change daily.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Nicole Shaheenian, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. After Nicole, we have John.
Sir.
Sir?
Sorry, bad handwriting.
Is it sir?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then Brad Kemp.
Good afternoon. Nicole Shaheenian, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I just briefly want to say that the Hollywood Chamber fully supports the establishment of an internet-based business tax classification, especially given today's economic climate. We think that moving forward with this as soon as possible is in the best interest of our city. We really hope that this classification will help to retain our member, our businesses in Hollywood, like our current member, LegalZoom, who's in the room, and also bring new businesses to Hollywood and Los Angeles. So we just urge you to act on this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. John Sir? It's not your handwriting. It said, I didn't want to put my glasses on.
Oh, no, I was just telling Eric I got, and the son of two doctors, so I was doomed to a third grader's handwriting for the rest of my life.
I got a penmanship award in the second grade. It's been downhill ever since.
Well, I guess I'm here in a few capacities. First as a serial internet entrepreneur, and second as a Los Angelino, and third as the CEO of LegalZoom.com. So just by way of background, I've been in the internet since 1995. Over the last 15 years, have launched seven different internet companies, both the CEO of an incubator and CEO of those companies, from jcrew.com to Barneys New York to Studio Direct, hi-fi.com.
Your parents let you do that?
They hated. They still deny me any respect for giving up a doctoral program.
It was in high school when you started there.
Yeah, actually went to high school right around the corner in Pauli, Pasadena. But I'd say the other thing at LegalZoom, we've actually incorporated probably about 1 in 10 businesses within a 50-mile radius of this building. So I hope I can speak fairly as both as a serial internet entrepreneur and generally for small business owners. Also, as a Los Angelino, I grew up in Pasadena. Family's been the same home since the 70s.
It's not far.
Not too far at all. And love Hollywood, love Los Angeles, a member of the board of the Chamber, the Hollywood Chamber, and of the Legislative Committee. But specifically as CEO of LegalZoom, we've built this company, I joined five years ago, wasn't one of the co-founders, but in the last five years, we've built it from 60 employees to now over 400. And over the next three years, we expect that number to as much as double. And one thing that, as I've been looking at these proceedings and looking at some of the calculations around, you know, what will happen with the tax, and completely understand the city, you know, as a businessperson, understand the city's under a lot of pressure with the budget. But one thing is, a lot of the calculations assume, one, that companies won't move and that they're not fungible, and two, I think, underestimate kind of that we're at a breaking point. So speaking only for LegalZoom, our lease is about to expire. We actually, our initial lease expired at the end of 2009, and we negotiated a one-year extension just on the basis of what could happen with the LA city tax. I kind of stuck my neck out to the board and, well, probably in this February, get it cut off because nothing did happen with the time limit, although I think we're moving forward. But we are absolutely looking at other places in Los Angeles, have reached out to Burbank, Glendale. We actually had negotiated a full lease outside of the city of LA and made this day. We've been looking at Austin and other states have been coming in. So just speaking as one of those internet companies, if this ordinance isn't passed, we will actually have to move. And that is a fairly near-term and imminent decision.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Excuse me for interrupting. Bernard Parks leaned over to me when one of the other speakers was here, and he said, do you think if we give them this break, will they commit to staying in Los Angeles? Would you support a tax relief that had a time limit on it? In other words, if you stay in, if you're a business and you stay in Los Angeles for five years, 10 years, that we will promise you a discount?
I think that would be the, speaking of we have LegalZoom and other, I think that would be the only way we would even have the potential to stay. We were willing to do that in our previous negotiations and commitment, but we realized also, LA city, we look at total costs.
Not just restricting it to your business.
Yeah. So it actually, tax relief and the promise of kind of a fix, because I know a lot of people have been reclassed, so they thought they were safe. They signed a lease and they got kind of reclassed. That's, that only with this new ordinance, we have the potential. Obviously, there's a lot of other costs with landlords, and our landlord happens to be CIM, so we couldn't tip our hand early. But only with this ordinance, will we have the potential of staying in Los Angeles. I'd say that one of the things is that the, when you look at, and we pay, we're in the kind of few hundred thousand dollars of that, you know, that 3 million that's expected to stay, and I think probably just between the tenants of Cressa and ourselves and some of the companies that are named, that's probably 3 million on its own of tax, that I think, as most people would say, are fairly imminent in a decision to renew leases based on the current real estate market. Now's the time to move. So based on what's happening in the real estate market, what's happened in the city tax, this is a fairly time-sensitive issue for a number of companies. I would say that, kind of similar to California, a lot of the LA city taxes are borne by a disproportionately small number of companies, of the larger employers. And of the internet companies, you know, I think the probably top 15 or 20 represent a huge portion of the jobs and of the tax burden for our particular category. And there's a pretty significant multiplier effect, just because we, as LegalZoom, you know, we have seven to eight people per thousand square feet. We occupy five floors in the corner of Hollywood and La Brea. So relative to other people, I think the impact to the restaurants around the area, to the hotels, et cetera, is quite disproportionate because we don't have offices. So everyone sits in a cube, and we're fairly dense. That makes us a very good employer and very good impact on the community, but also, I think, has a significant multiplier effect on the taxes.
Okay, you, the clock stopped somewhere in your conversation, so you got about five minutes extra.
I noticed that. That's why I kept going.
It's still on 1:10, and it stopped again, so in any case.
You have a defective clock over there.
Must be an internet problem.
Just ask one thing.
Maybe you didn't pay your tax bill.
When you commented about the commitment to stay, I don't know if you said yes or no. Is that?
I'm saying that I can't, I can't make that commitment. One, because a lot of that depends not, I'd say that the anti for us staying, and we desperately want to stay and have been negotiating with the city and the Office of Tax for three years, to try and get a commitment around the tax so I could sign a lease. But there are two factors. One is the LA city tax, and two is, you know, general occupancy costs and our current landlord, who has been a little bit difficult, I would say, to deal with. So, you know, bringing those two together, you know, we've been trying to renew a lease and sign that lease. You know, frankly.
And renegotiate.
Yeah, and, you know, we're looking at renegotiating both within Hollywood and, you know, outside of Hollywood. So I'd say that the one thing would be, though, if the LA city tax stayed as it was, we would have no hope but to move immediately, and we're looking at a March-April signing of a lease. So it's fairly imminent. No, I know there are many other companies caught up in this, but I think, you know, this has been an issue that's been brewing for many years, and knowing what's happening in the commercial real estate market, a lot of the larger companies are looking to renew right now. So it's a pretty time-sensitive issue.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Brad Kemp?
Thank you.
And City Attorney, is there anything that prohibits us from providing a rebate provision in a tax that's tied to the duration of businesses in Los Angeles? So for example, we would provide a rebate, we could collect the business tax for a period of time, but then at the end of a certain time, if they're still in business at five years, we could rebate them?
Well, the tax incentives the charter allows us to do have to be linked to a geographic area. I'd need to look at that more carefully and see what exactly the proposal is.
Okay, I'm not sure what you just said, but can you, can you do that?
Yeah.
Can you look at that? And I'd be very interested in introducing that for the Business Tax Advisory Committee to consider.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, thank you very much. Brad?
Good morning. My name is Brad Kemp. I'm Director of Regional Research with Beacon Economics. We were hired to obviously look at this and both the economic impact in terms of the dollars that would be lost, and we did that. I can tell you that that's far less important than the incentives that we should talk about in this conversation. Economics is a study of incentives and impacts. Rents are higher in Los Angeles County, or in Los Angeles City. The cost of doing business is higher in the city of Los Angeles than it is in many of the surrounding areas. And if we're trying to incentivize people to take these businesses, and let me say, we're putting a lot of efforts right now in green. And what I can tell you is that as much as I support that, it's a huge issue, and we want to become a center of that type of business, the demand is still growing, and until we have the demand, it's not going to grow on its own. This industry already has demand. It is the future of the way we're doing business, and I think we have to recognize if we want to be a leader in a growing industry, we have to support the internet-based businesses like this in the city of Los Angeles. So I'm not here to waste any more of your time. I wanted to share with you that I think that this is an incentive issue. We should be less focused on the tax dollars lost and more the tax dollars gained by bringing more of these businesses into the area. And I want to thank you and opportunity to speak today. Any questions?
I do want to point out that Mr. Garcetti left, so we were just kidding. We're not going to pass this thing. No. I'd like to accept a motion from Mr. Parks to support this in concept, move it forward to Budget and Finance Committee pending the results of the finance office's determination of the budget impact. But I think it's clearly our intent to support this effort. We believe this is a growing industry, and to the extent that we treat it with that respect, then we should gain more benefits in the long run. But it deserves consideration by Budget and Finance in terms of its impact. Doesn't mean that if it comes back with some kind of severe report, or if Budget and Finance doesn't approve it, that we still won't pass on the city council. But just for prudence purposes, we want to make sure we have a look at it from the perspective of the impact on budget. Mr. Parks?
Internet, if, do you have the opportunity, and looking at your report, could it be done for our meeting on the 25th?
Actually, it's going to be a joint report with the CAO's office. That was a request of Councilmember Alacon. Rex is here from CAO's office. I know we're going to be meeting tomorrow to talk more about the report. I would anticipate it being completed and sign off hopefully by the end of this week. Rex, do you?
The thing that I'm concerned about, I think we have to have it by Thursday or Friday to be on Monday's agenda. And if we, and even though we're off-site, we'd be willing to have that on the agenda so that we won't slow it down. So I just want to find out is that the possibility? Otherwise, we're seven days further down the line.
We'll make every effort to get that report out this week so it can be calendared.
Okay, very good. If you could work with Monique in my office so we can get that, make sure that's on the agenda.
Okay, we're working with Miguel on this particular matter.
Okay, I mean, but so that she can get it on the Budget and Finance agenda.
Okay.
Let me just say, one thing's for those that are here, let me just express what my concerns are, in that I think I fully support the BTAC in the sense of looking at our overall structure for taxes. One of the things my concerns are is that we have, in the past, done a few things to assist primarily the movie industry, and in their somewhat fickle way, they move across the country wherever the best deal is. And so if Austin gives them a better deal, or Canada, and so it's very difficult at times when we're looking at tax revenue to talk about how do we zero out on a business that may or may not make the same commitment that we are. And that's why the question is asked as it relates to, is there an ability to have that commitment if we're talking literally millions of dollars? Because it's great, and obviously, your reserve funds may be greater than ours, because, and it's great to say, don't worry about what you're losing, think about what you're going to gain. Well, we've had a lot of budgets like that and it never gained. And so the issue is, we're talking hard dollars, that if it's missing, you can't write a check. And so these are things that we need to clarify, that if it's 3 million or 4 million, those are real dollars, and we're betting on the come that it will gain us 3 million to whatever, then we break even. And then you say, well, then what is it that's going to then make it basically that it's revenue, it's not revenue neutral, but it's revenue increase? That's what we have to look at in Budget and Finance, because without some of those commitments, then we again are taking a flyer saying, we're trying to hold on to 10 businesses, and what is their commitment to stay in LA? And if there is no commitment, then we're going to lose the money anyway, although 8,000 companies could benefit from your efforts, and we lose a significant amount of revenue. So those are the kinds of discussions. And I realize you can't make a commitment because you're going through a lease issue, but on the other hand, you have to realize what our position is. And again, if we had your revenue source in your reserve fund, we'd feel the same way, except ours is a little different, in that we're trying to at least have a reserve fund when we go into July 1st. And so those are some of our considerations.
I do want to respond, at least in this way, not to, not to counter what you're saying, Mr. Parks, but my experience in the city council dating back to 1993 and working in city government dating back to 1981, is that when we have considerations of taxes, that quite often, we find ourselves providing taxes to businesses that aren't going to grow or are going to be non-existent. And in other words, we give rebates to companies that aren't benefiting Los Angeles because we have general rebates. What we are trying to do in this specific case is target this industry because we believe it's a growth industry. We're not, we're not creating a generic tax. We're saying, this is a specific tax to this industry because we believe that it's going to grow, there will be more companies like it, and we will generate revenue by giving them a tax break. So it's sort of like when a city considers a sports team, whether or not they want a sports team, and they have to make the consideration of whether they think it's going to be successful or not, and quite often, they base that on parking revenue. And sometimes they hit the mark, sometimes they don't. But that's what we're doing here. So we're tailoring the tax code to something that we think is a growth industry, to alleviate the tax burden on that industry so that it will grow. But anyway, I think we've, over time, where we've made mistakes is that we've given tax breaks. breaks in business areas that are not growth industries, do not produce good revenue stimulus, do not pay good wages, and that, that has hurt the city.
On your sports analogy, the thing I think their commitment is, they generally come with a billion-dollar stadium.
Yeah, I was afraid to use that analogy, but.
Which is somewhat of a commitment.
By the way, I did get a text message from Eric Garcetti. He said, I heard that, so.
But if you guys can get that for the 25th.
So we're going to move that item forward with our support, recognizing that Budget and Finance will take another look at it from the specific numbers perspective. Item number one.
Item number one, CLA report relative to amending Los Angeles Municipal Code to revise the Administrative Appeals Process for Business Tax Decisions and Reclassifications and Related Matters.
Mr. Wickham?
Yes, John Wickham with the CLA's office. At your December 15th meeting, you had requested that the CLA take a look at the Office of Finance report concerning Administrative Appeals Process. The Office of Finance had come forward to you with some recommendations concerning a potential ordinance to address situations where there is a conflict between a past Board of Review decision and a current Board of Review decision. One of our initial concerns in looking at this proposal was whether this was a unique situation, or whether this was a larger issue. And, you know, since 2005 or so, through the recommendation of B-TAC and directions from council, Office of Finance has worked more diligently on its collections process. They've really been working very hard on that. And what we're seeing now is a greater likelihood that there are going to be more audits, and there are going to be more Boards of Review decisions. And so what this idea deals with, it tries to address, is situations where there might be a conflict between those decisions. So we, in our review, we recommend that the council request the city attorney to prepare an ordinance concerning this, this conflict, and try and set up a situation to address that conflict. In going through this review, we found that there is also some concerns in the way the Board of Review is structured. There have been a number of changes in ordinance concerning the Board of Review since 2001, and again, 2005. And it resulted in changes that reduce the transparency and understanding of what the board is doing. And so in our report, we've recommended some additional changes to the structure of the Board of Review to help expand the board, make sure that they're professionals, that they have experience in municipal and state tax issues, that there's transparency to the taxpayer, so the taxpayer understands when a decision comes back, what that was really based on. These are things that the Board of Review is doing now, but because of a number of factors, it's not coming clear that, about what they're doing. So it was important to highlight transparency issues here and make sure that these issues were forward, front and center. So, here to answer any questions? You may have.
That was a very good tap dance.
This is, this one is complicated. The first part is complicated. The second part wasn't so complicated. The first part is, because there's so many moving pieces in the terminology, to go out and get to it.
What we're dealing with is a very difficult situation, where we have, where we had a tax imposed retroactively on somebody, but it took a long time, like 10 years. And that just rubs, just on the face of it, it rubs people the wrong way. So we're trying to correct that situation. And on the one hand, we may make some wrong decisions going into the process, and undercut the value of the company, and therefore the revenue that we should be generating. On the other hand, it requires us to be more diligent in the first case, to make sure that we're properly assessing the business so that we don't have to go back 10 years and try to collect, because typically, that collection's no good. I mean, it's just not, you're not going to get it back. And that's probably why we have 400 million in uncollected debt. I'm being extreme, but, but it certainly adds to that uncollected debt. But I like the report that you did. I think, I think we want to give B-TAC an opportunity to review a couple of these considerations. But in the meantime, I'd like to call up, make public comment unless you have a comment missed.
I was just wondering, is this a one-time deal? I couldn't get a sense of, is this routine that we have these double reviews and basically overturn prior decisions?
This is the first case that the Office of Finance has identified of this kind of conflict happening. So, you know, in a sense, this is a one-time deal, and that was my concern, that we were going, you know, trying to find a solution for one case. But because of the enhanced tax discovery that's been, that the council and B-TAC have asked Office of Finance to do in order to fund some of the tax reform that has happened over the last five years, there's a greater likelihood that this is going to come up in the future. So since there is no provision in the code right now to deal with those conflicts, this is probably the time to put some solution in place. And the solution here is saying that in the past, we're going to, we're not going to go after the past tax liability. We're going to, we're going to say, you know, we made a promise to you, we're going to stick with that promise, as to what your tax category is going forward will be the revised tax category. And that's, that's an issue that triggers the Equal Protection Clause in the Federal Constitution, and the state constitution, and there are issues with our charter regarding the going-forward part of this.
Let me ask you, in the current Board of Review, they go through a process, is there a review process for their decisions? Does that come before a council committee, or does that, or is their review final?
Their review has, well, that's been one of the questions about, how final is their decision? Up until 2005, their decision has been binding. There was a change in the ordinance in 2005 that created some question, is this a binding decision or not?
What was that change?
There was a court case, what happened was, up until 2005, the ordinance specified who sits on the board, and one of those people was the city attorney. There was a court case in which it was declared a conflict of interest to have a city attorney sitting on a board like that. So the city attorney came forward and asked, suggested, we need to change this ordinance to remove the appointing authorities, so that it's no, so there's no conflict. And some of the language in there, kind, the changes resulted in some ambiguity as to whether this is a binding decision now or not. And here we are, four or five years later, and we're saying, okay, we need to make sure that the history of the Board of Review from prior to 1969 or so, it has been binding, and it is a binding decision.
So they had no subsequent review once they made the decision?
No. At that point, it will go, it can go to either the city attorney's office for a settlement, and the city attorney has settlement opportunities, or it will go to the courts, and the courts will solve it.
Okay, very good. Public comment? Rachel Glazer?
I think she left.
Jack Newcomb? And then John, sorry, Rick Newcomb?
Hi, I'm Jack Newcomb, the General Manager of Creator Syndicate, which is the one example in question. And the reason I'm up here is because I'm really evaluating the future of our business and where we're going to go, and it's really dependent on what happens with this current situation. To quote you, Mr. Chair, you know, I think the city's really being penny wise and pound foolish in this scenario. If I were on the Office of Finance, what I would do is analyze two scenarios. One in which they continue to bully us and charge these back taxes and put us in this higher tax rate, and then eventually, the future cash flow that they're going to receive from Creator Syndicate will be zero. If they go by the prior Board of Review ruling and in accordance with the rule of law, then they'll have a perpetuity, perpetuity of future cash flows of whatever that is. So it's going to be a lot more than zero. The second thing is, I think that a big problem here is just, there aren't any consequences. So people act and do things the way that they want to because there's no retribution. I mean, I, on my way here, I stop at a red light, because if I don't, I'm going to get a ticket, or I'm going to get into an accident. There are consequences if I go through that red light. Right now, there are no immediate consequences. Nobody's been fired, nobody's been indicted on abuse of power. The long-term consequences are that businesses are going to leave, and they are going to continue to leave. I don't want to bore anybody with statistics, but I read in Forbes that if you combine Detroit, Miami, and New York for the households abandoning those three cities combined, it's actually less than the households leaving Los Angeles. And those are three pretty big cities. I'm only saying this because I, you know, I grew up in L.A., I went to Loyola High School not too far from here, and I just really don't want to leave, and we love this place. And this is just, it's disheartening for me to continue to come here and do this, so that's it.
Thank you. Rick?
Nice to see you again. I'm Rick Newcomb with Creator Syndicate. And, Mr. Parks, you weren't here last time, last month at the hearing, but I want to just explain what happened. We're the one case where in 1994, we had a Board of Review ruling. Relying on that ruling, we made the decision to stay in Los Angeles. Had we lost the ruling, we were all set to move to El Segundo.
Excuse me, what was the ruling?
It was our classification.
It was an appeal, was it?
It was an appeal. And the whole key is the, you have to know what your tax rate is.
The reason I say, it was reviewed twice.
That's correct. It was reviewed in 93 at a hearing, and then in 94, we got the final ruling. Relying on that, we decided to stay. This past June, the new Board of Review said, oh, we're not bound by prior rulings. And they consistently said to us throughout, the auditing supervisor, the field auditor, everyone at the Office of Finance, oh, we overturned Board of Review rulings all the time. And I knew in my gut that that was not true. Now, last month, Antoinette Christaville testified before this committee that in her 10 years as General Manager, she was unable to find a single example of where this happened. So I did some research, and I contacted a fellow named Terrence Manakio, who was Head of Enforcement of the Office of Finance before Ed Cabrera, and he told me, no, no, we never do that. Once a Board of Review ruling is made, there is an unwritten rule that that carries the weight of law, that if the city gives a business its classification, the business can rely on that classification, knowing what its tax rate is. I mean, it's just personally, if you have a tax rate from the IRS, and they have the right every three years, or, you know, with the passage of time, just arbitrarily to change it, that's not fair. Now, if your, if the business model changes, that's a different story. They can look at that. Or if there's a law passed, they raise your taxes, okay, fine, but not arbitrarily and capriciously from an administrative body, the tax collectors, saying, even though we told you to pay this, we're going to punish you because you did, and in the future, you got to pay that. Makes no sense. So we really hope you pass a well-written code that.
So I can use you as a, as a reference when I go into IRS and tell them that they shouldn't raise my taxes even though my income's increased?
That's correct. You should. They can't say raise the rate.
Increase again?
Yeah.
Increase again?
Again.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We, what we are considering, we have a, the CLA's recommendations are threefold. One would preclude the Board of Review from assessing, and direct the Board of Review to negate any assessment of past tax liability in cases where the current Board of Review determination is in conflict with a previous Board of Review determination with regard to business classification. Secondly, an audit of the Office of Finance has been conducted in both periods. The taxpayer provided full and complete information to Finance's audit staff during the course of each audit, and the business model and method of operations of taxpayer, of the taxpayer are proven to be the same in both periods. In other words, if everything else is the same.
Yeah.
The Board of Review should be as good as another.
Yeah, you've been cooperating, you told the truth, and there's no change, so there shouldn't be.
I have no problem with adopting that recommendation.
I don't either. My concerns are, is that it's a one-time deal, and sometimes it's overkill to create an ordinance for a one-time deal, when common sense and logic should have worked this out.
Yeah.
And the thing is, I think Department of Finance and all the things, they do need some flexibility to work those things out. But again, in reading it, I don't necessarily have concern.
Yeah, I spent a number of weeks in that same house.
With regard to the recommendations to restructure the Board of Review, and then some of the, some of the things that the Board of Review must, must consider, I wanted to refer those to the Business Tax Advisory Committee, as well as the final recommendation, clarify that the Board of Review decision is binding, is a binding action on the Office of Finance. So let's be very clear, on A, it sounds like we're doing what D does.
In, in the very specific case, yeah, where that, where's that, where there's the conflict and it comes forward and says, you know, this is what the tax rate should be. The last is just a little bit broader.
Well, if we're precluding a Board of Review from assessing and negating an assessment of a past tax liability case, I mean, are there any other cases that the Board of Review would be looking at?
Just wanted to make sure it was clear. After spending a lot of time with the.
It was clear the first time, but when you said it the second time, it made it a little unclear. Did I miss something the first time?
No, no, you didn't.
I think it's redundant, so I don't know that we need to do D, do we?
It, it might feel redundant, but I wanted to make sure that the concept was there and that it was clear, whether, because sometimes, you know, the words come back on the page, and I just.
Just answer me this. What is, how is D different from A?
D covers the full scope of Board of.
Okay.
Yeah, because they also deal with apportionments and.
We're going to review that, because we don't know, there may be some other innocuous function that.
Yeah, like apportionments, because you might say that 80% is in the city, and they'll say 90% is in the city, so those are the different classifications.
We want to take a closer look at that aspect, but with regard to a past tax liability, we want to allow for a decision to stand on the Board of Review. Okay, so we're approving A. My recommendation is that we send B, C, and D to the Business Tax Advisory Committee. Would you concur?
That's good.
Okay, then that's, that would be the order.
I'll be presenting this to B-TAC tomorrow.
Let me ask you, the ordinance is, you're talking about, where, what, does that put that in limbo until B, C, and D come out of B-TAC?
I believe, the city attorney might be able to.
Or does it go forward with just A, or what is that?
No, we can, we can draft an amendment to 2116 just to address A, and then the remainder can be considered by B-TAC through their deliberations.
If we need to do it again, we'll do it.
Okay, so we're going to get the ordinance, so when will that ordinance be ready?
We've already worked with the CLA's office on getting some provisional language, but it's going to take some work. There's a lot of moving parts in this particular amendment, so we want to make sure.
Will it be ready when it comes to council?
When's it going to council?
You would have to first draft the ordinance, so what would come out of committee today would be to request the city attorney to prepare and present the appropriate ordinance. That ordinance would be prepared, submitted to us, and at that point, either the committee can hear the ordinance, or simply waive it and send it forward to council. That would be the process.
It would be helpful if we could have the ordinance come with the report, then you're not keeping a string on something.
In other words, we're going to have some time.
Depending on how fast they work on their piece.
Exactly, it depends on how fast B-TAC gets the recommendation from us.
Well, I mean, but if A is not going to B-TAC, right?
From a ministerial point of view, A is completely independent of B, C, and D, so the one's not going to hold the other up. It'd be handled when they come in the door.
Well, he, Mr. Parks actually wants them B to get.
In that case, then it would.
If we have A in the ordinance, that's, if that could happen, that would be ideal. Not B, C, and D, but A and, the ordinance for A, if it get, when it gets the council, would make it ideal to prove everything, the report and the ordinance, and it's a done deal. Otherwise, we have that long history of chasing down ordinances after we approve.
No, 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 I think the intent is to get the ordinance related to A.
So we'll work with the city attorney's office and the clerk to try and bring these together at the same time, and we'll go from there.
Wait, I think we're saying two different things. We want the ordinance for A to come, to move forward. We don't want it to be blocked by B, C, and D.
Yes.
But we also would like for B, C, and D to catch up with the ordinance.
Oh.
So let's move forward with the ordinance, and then hopefully, the B-TAC will give us a recommendation on the other three.
When does B-TAC meet?
They're meeting tomorrow afternoon.
Is this going to be on their agenda?
This is on their agenda.
Do you think, well, we don't know about this, this group, but.
They've established a subcommittee to deal with administrative issues, such as the Board of Review, so I will talk to the committee, subcommittee chair, and see. Board of Review, so I will talk to the committee, subcommittee chair, and see-
I mean, do you have more specific recommendations with regard to B, C, and D that are going to be proposed to B-TAC?
I don't. These are, these, I felt these were pretty specific. They may want to make adjustments as to, you know, instead of five, they want seven, or they want, you know, different appointing authorities, and there may be some other adjustments that they, they have from the, you know, the abundance of their stuff.
Well, we'll reserve a time slot on this committee for those recommendations.
Okay.
Whenever they get them out, we'll be happy to hear the next available meeting.
Yeah. I understand that, yeah.
Let them know, we really want to see this thing move forward.
Okay. Terrific.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.